Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Wednesday, September 25th, at 7:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody's here with the exception of Councilman Ted Fletcher, who is excused. He let us know that he would be out of town for his son's wedding, so congratulating for that. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would like to stay standing afterwards, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record in which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and all.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You know, actually, I'm going to call an audible tonight. I've got a pastor in the audience tonight. Would you be so kind to come up and say a blessing for us?
Sure, absolutely.
Hate to put you on the spot like that, but it's just, I just thought about it. When I look at it, why wouldn't I defer to somebody who can do it better than me?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather, to contemplate and to consider the issues that are at hand in this community. Father, we ask you that you would give us your minds, your hearts, your wisdom. In Jesus' precious name, we thank you, God, for this council, for each member of this ruling body here. Pray these things in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move into Item 5, which is Citizens Forum. And Mr. Christian Moore, who was just at the podium, is the only person that signed up to speak. So please do come on up, sir, and introduce yourself. We will have a second Citizens Forum, so if you would like to speak in the second Citizens Forum, please feel free to submit one of these cards, and we'll get you up.
Yes, my name is Christian Moore, of the Pastor at Evergrace. We are newly opened church meeting at Christ Community School. And we have been engaged in, involved with meeting needs out in Splendora. Some of the fine citizens of Shenandoah have reached out to us as a church with volunteering, material aid, as well as service to help those folks out there. Today, I was out there with a meeting with a pastor that we're partnering with, Scott Anderson, the New Beginnings Baptist Church, just to get an idea of what the need is out there. And to be brief, about 300-plus homes have been impacted or are ruined because of the flooding there. Some of the flooding has reached 10-foot marks, 14-feet water lines in some places. And so, meeting with some of the aid agencies and organizations that are in Houston that are coming out up there, such as Houston Responds, we are just orchestrating, really meeting the needs that are out there. So our, my desire and my petition is, is that we would, first of all, be in prayer for these folks. Some people are losing everything. And secondly, a lot of good things are happening. We have a warehouse where we can store things, a 1,200-square-foot warehouse where we can begin to store supplies, equipment. At this point, this Saturday, we'll be meeting right here in front of this building, in front of City Hall, at 8:00, for those in the Shenandoah community that would like to physically help with either sorting food at the food bank there, providing aid as far as just counseling or being with folks, finding out what their needs are, or just actually going in and just doing some mucking and gutting, which is just tearing out a lot of material that is already wet, so we can beat the black mold. So, we at Evergrace are going to be rallying folks together, and I'm also in touch with some other churches that are in the area, in the region here, that, see if we can rally those folks together. So that's just something, just a little bit of an update of what's happening, and just really blessed by the outpouring of support by the citizens here of Shenandoah. So, thanks for that support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I saw Dave turn in the card. Is that for the second one? Okay.
No.
Oh, first one?
I'll do it now.
All right, come on up.
I'm Dave McMullin. I live in Sowerwood Ranch, and I just want to pour my heart out to the pastor here for the hard work that he's doing, and let him know that we'll all pray for them. I want to speak about the parks. I have some good ideas that may or may not be of age for us, but I'm going to rewind my clock to second, third, and fourth grade, when I could leave my elementary school and go across the street to the city park and play in the rec room, play caroms, ping-pong, check out basketballs, volleyballs and kickballs, and soccer balls. We didn't have soccer in those days, but we had kickballs, baseballs, and various gear. But one of the things that was really cool was having the recreation room, because in that recreation room, we were able to have crafts and other learning experiences. And my mother and her friends were able to play bridge and have a place to go. And my father loved to whip the socks off of some friends on the ping-pong table. So those hold fond memories for me, and that's where I learned to play baseball, and then moved on to Little League. But I would like to see, I have a vision of a really nice recreation facility with a kitchen at the park. If we had the same kind of facility in the park and the ambiance of the park, the lighting of the angels, the Easter egg hunt, and the Independence celebration, those things could be conducted down there, and it would make it much more convenient for the civic club to actually bring all those things there. And we might even have the ability to have potlucks. Now, the next item, too, would be to think about, could we do it someday and have a Parks and Recreation Director? Someone who would open it after school, maybe 2:00, 2:30, and keep it open until dinnertime, 6:00, and have it run year-round? And I'd like to make the same suggestion for the pool. I'd like to see the pool run later in the year. I realize my time's up, but close your eyes and visualize what a cool place it would be for our kids to run and play in a relatively safe environment, because I know the chief and his guys do a great job. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Okay, well, as usual, y'all know me. If you didn't get a chance to speak, please feel free to get up and let us hear you in the second Citizens Comment, Citizens Forum section. Council inquired. Anybody got anything right now?
Yeah, actually, I do.
Okay.
First of all, I want to encourage everybody to go out and vote. Registration deadline is coming up real quick. I think it's October 1st. We've got like six days left, so if you're not registered to vote, please, 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 our community needs you. Go out, get registered to vote. That's the first thing. Secondly, I want to thank everybody. I know Christian and I, we got this thing together at the very last minute last Saturday, and we still filled up the minivan because of Shenandoah response. And this community cares about our extended community, and I just want to say thank you all for that. And I know Splendora really appreciated those items. So, that's really the big, the big thing. I know, I would, I can encourage y'all, if you can, I unfortunately can't, but if you can, get out there and help, because that's, that's where they're at now. They need the physical labor, and that, you know, Saturday and Sunday, they're at the point, that's what they need. They're going to need to get these homes gutted, get these things cleaned up. If you're able to do that, you can meet here with Christian on Saturday morning and get you over to Splendora and get you hooked up, so.
Yeah, in case you missed it, it's 8:00 AM this Saturday morning here at City Hall. Christian will be meeting to take people to Splendora. And I just want to bring back up that, I think my math is right on this, next Wednesday we have a town hall meeting about the parks? Is that correct?
Correct.
It's Wednesday? Yeah, so Wednesday at 7:00?
Yes.
Wednesday at 7:00 PM, we will be hearing citizens' comments and concerns and ideas about the parks.
Holly Hill Park.
What's that?
Holly Hill Park, to be specific.
Yeah, Holly Hill Park, to be specific. But, it'd be a great town hall. So, okay, we will move from there into Item 7, which is Presentation Regarding Civic Club Elected Officers. Wendy, would you like to come up and handle this one for us? Come on up.
Thank you.
Did Dad see you under the bus?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and distinguished staff. My name is Wendy Brott, and I live at 29104 Cedarwood Drive, and I'm here to present you our list of officers for the 2019-2020 fiscal year for the civic club. And they are first-term Gwen Quinn for President, first-term Lauren Munn for Vice President, and I will be taking my second term as Secretary for the civic club for this year. And I also would like to extend wishes out to Ms. Dixie McLeod as well, in a speedy recovery, while she is away from the civic club at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you for everything y'all do. Okay, let's move into Item 8, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Dates for the November and December City Council Meeting Dates.
Council, this is something we do every year as we get close to the holidays, because we only meet once in November and once in December, so we just pick that date. More often than not, we just use the regular first meeting of the month date, if that works for everybody.
Do I have a motion?
I think a motion. Do we have a single meeting in November, December? November 13th and December 11th?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? I think those dates make the most sense for me, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 9, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Designation of a Representative and Alternate for the Houston-Galveston Area Council 2020 General Assembly.
Council, I know we just went through this in July, and, but HGAC has to do this at the fiscal year change, too, so that's why we have to go through this again. If you're seeing on your agenda report, Councilmember Brott was the primary representative, and Councilmember Raymaker was the alternate, as selected in July.
Do I have a motion?
A motion to leave it the way it is.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion for Councilman, I bet you do, by the way. I have a motion for Councilman Brott to be the primary with Councilman Raymaker as the alternate. Do we have any discussion? Councilman Brott and Raymakers, are you willing to serve in this capacity?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you for your service, gentlemen. Item 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Revisions to the Employee Policy Manual.
Council, the revisions are on your agenda pack, and I did send it out in advance as well, to give you more time to review. Most of these are general updates, revisions. We did integrate some fragmented policies that were kind of floating around, just to have one document. So if you have questions or comments about any of the revisions, Councilmember Raymaker did give some feedback, which has been incorporated into the document.
So I've got, there's one question, and maybe it's a legal thing. I know I can't find it right now for the, in terms of directors who are disciplined, et cetera, have a right to appeal to council. Should that apply to all employees, or is there, in other words, an employee goes through the process, is there a final step for a public appeal to council for other employees agreeing to grievance? Because it seems, I guess the way I read it, it's like...
There is not.
There's not.
Right now, it's director level and above. And the reason for that is, very simply, if Joseph terminated someone at the wastewater treatment plant, we could be hearing appeals. You might be hearing 15 appeals a year, and it takes away the authority of your leadership. It would be like me, me having the, or not me, but someone having the ability at General Motors on the assembly line to go to the Board of Directors when they were terminated. At some point, you just have to say, that's it.
But as I understand it, if Joseph were to terminate someone, they would have a right to appeal to city administrator.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
Going to make sure we've got some...
Yes.
Checks and balances. So the finance policy, are we going to have a separate policy? So can we name that? Because right now, it says the policies are available from the finance director.
So we, the only formal policy we have is the procurement policy, so...
Oh, yeah, okay, we got a...
Yeah, so there was a draft that was started before I got here. I don't think it was ever adopted. I can't find any history on it. So currently, we're working, me and Chris are working together to get more of our financial procedures more digital, so I don't want to draft a policy, bring it to you guys, and then have to change it in three months. So that will be, it'll be an overall one, and it'll include anything that has to do with anything in finance, and even risk management.
And so that was, that was kind of my, do we, we can adopt this, or make some tweaks, or do we create a separate finance policy and say, that's going to be subject to that, or should we, and I'm okay with adopting this, and then six months later, getting the finance part of it put in there?
Typically...
But do you want to keep a separate, is there a desire to have a separate finance policy?
Typically, because of the size of it, because it involves so many different aspects with anything with financials in cities. Cities do keep it separate. They do reference it typically. I can get more examples for you and send it over to you.
Well, I just...
I think Conroe's is totally separate from their...
And that's, and that's what I was understanding, but it's just, it was just the verbiage where it says, you know, basically, ask the finance director.
Yeah.
And I would think we would want to point them to some, another official document that says, this is how, if you want to purchase something...
Yeah, we can, we can always just change the language after we get that policy adopted, which I'm hoping is in the next couple of months, after we iron out some of our procedures.
Okay.
And we do have some interim changes to the procurement policy on the agenda tonight that we'll look at.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we wanted to talk about having a fully separate policy. Open records request. Right now, we say they all have to go through the records clerk.
Records clerk, correct.
I know there were some changes made effective September 1. Can you address that, and should we include the specific verbiage here to make that, make those changes?
I don't think they really fit in the employee manual. But yes, you're correct. State law changed such that, right now, if an open records request is made, and we have on our website a way to make that request, then we can require a citizen to use that format. In the past, you could just show up and hand anyone a request, or email it to any employee, and so that's a definite improvement in the law. And frankly, our website is great in terms of record requests. It's very easy to use. I think it's three, well, I don't know, I think it's three clicks and you're done.
Yeah.
So it's, it's easy.
So that's my, so my thought there would be just to have, if you're giving an open records request outside of an affidavit, which would then be a legal thing that you'd have to make sure city administrator's aware of, should we there say, direct the individual, so if somebody wants to come to me and make an open records request, should we have the employee direct them to the website?
Yes.
Is, that's just my thought, in terms of that part of the policy. Go, if somebody comes and asks any employee, hey, I want to make an open records request, the employee's response should be, go to the website, as part of, that's our policy. You don't respond to it, you say, go to the website.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay, I mean, that was just, that was a thought to me, just to make a change like Chris, I had some questions on the IT. I noticed that there's some different timeouts and some different password timing logs. In some areas, it's saying 15 minutes and some 10 minutes, and I didn't know, I do very much like the in-code, has to have a separate password. That's fantastic, but there were some, I'll try and find it for you.
Yeah, you could highlight specifically where you're referring to.
Ah, okay.
I'm trying to find it. I mean, we have an overarching policy as far as Windows domain security, you know, Shenandoah domain security policies, they're pretty standard.
And that was actually what I was going to ask. This is, there's a lot of, I won't say minutia, but there's a lot of details in here.
Well, that policy, once again, I think it's kind of like what Bill said, may not, the verbiage may be too specific, or too specific to actually be in this, in the policy manual, but it was a separate IT policy that we basically lead here to, so it, you know, it's outlined here. But the minutia may not necessarily, you know, if we framed it differently, it wouldn't actually be in here. It's a...
And that's sort of my concern. I want it to restrict our ability to move on the fly, right? Does that make sense? If it's in the policy manual, that's sort of the rules.
Sure, absolutely. I get what you're saying. And there again, it's like anything else, that, you know, we keep up with the times and try to, as far as industry and things that are recommended, and as far as security, you know, can and will, will change those things, and, you know, as needed.
Well, that's, but this is a policy manual for all employee behavior, and what we're saying is if, we're going to come back to council because...
It's a force-down policy.
We're changing passwords.
Sure. But it's a force-down policy. It's not really something that employees have a choice over. It's applied.
Right.
So, you know, it's kind of like...
I'm like, is it even employee policy? Because it's a domain, I mean, if a computer's on the domain, these rules apply, right? I mean, that's my understanding.
That is correct.
That's the way I, yeah.
That is correct.
So I guess my question...
Most places will make you go through a cybersecurity course before you start, and it would include all this.
Right. But I guess my, it's my thought is, is the employee policy manual, I mean, do we have a simple thing that says, employees will conform to domain restrictions and won't attempt to bypass?
A general statement. You're saying that may necessarily, the policy manual, not necessarily the proper framework to have something like...
That's what, that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, I like your rule. I mean, I think the, I think it's good IT practices in terms of, of the stuff that's in here. My concern is, this is the employee policy manual. Would a more general statement fit in there?
I think that's a good statement, because obviously, like I said, those policies can and will change, and you wouldn't have to necessarily bring that back to council to have that revision made.
And that's just you and Kathy, you know, you proposing something, Kathy saying, that sounds good, and...
Sure.
That, that's just my opinion. I don't know, Ron, Dean, Charlie, what y'all are thinking?
Personally, I think the more times that it gets drummed into an employee's head, the more likely it is to penetrate. So, I mean, in general, IT policies, especially security, is like that, so more exposure equal better compliance. So I, I don't oppose it being in the policy manual, but I get what you're talking about, so.
Are we talking about an active directory situation?
We are, but in general, it's just, it's just how we handle user security. It's what you're expected to adhere to, or you will be, well, you're forced to adhere to that, and you don't really have a choice in the matter.
Right, that's where I was going. So you could set it up that every 30 days, they must change the password, and you can't repeat one...
Right.
...in 365 days, or whatever your policy you put.
Correct.
I mean, if you wanted to maybe paraphrase it more, and then have the detailed documents so that I, again, got more reinforcement as an employee, then if I look at a couple pages of it, I might veg out.
Well, I think the idea there was, is that, so you didn't, we don't have separate documents floating around outside of policies.
Yeah.
You're definitely, your comments are definitely validated, but the other side of that, that argument is that, oh, that we have these separate little policies that exist, that aren't necessarily, you know, we want to make sure they're presented to the employee in the proper mechanism upfront, that they don't, you know, it's not second hand, or they, or they didn't get it, or didn't know. So I think, how else, how else do you deliver that to the employee? Do you want a policy that they read and have to sign off separately? That they, that you get acknowledging that they read and understand that policy, but it's not necessarily part of this?
I just, I was talking about the details, about the passwords and the lockouts and some of that stuff.
Sure.
And then even the 1106 IT security is, is some interesting verbiage about, you know, it's really kind of what, it's your job, right? Because it says, you know, employees must be made aware of, and kind of what, what you're going to do to help them secure our systems.
Yes.
That's, again, I like it, and I hear what you're saying about having it in one place, but I wonder if some of the stuff that's domain lockdown, wouldn't, wouldn't be better, you know, here's the password requirements. Well, next month, best practices may say, you know, of course, we all know, really, the reality is longer passwords are better, right?
Yep.
And maybe we say, oh, it's eight characters with a special character. That's really only for humans, but maybe next year, best practices is a 10-character. I don't want to bring the whole policy manual back to have it, to tell people, I just want you to be able to go, boom, next time you change your password, you're going to have to do 10 characters.
I agree with you. I think, I think if we generalize it more, that way I didn't have to bring smaller revisions, because, you know, we're working on some other things that may change, like restricting, you know, I don't know, bringing certain devices into the city.
I was actually heading to that, so.
And stuff like that.
Doing what?
Personal devices.
Bringing a particular device, so say, we didn't allow iPhones any longer, just for example, then there would have to be a policy revision on IT side, saying you can no longer bring an iPhone into the city, or anything.
I did, I did have a specific question on the passwords, though.
Sure.
We're saying 180 days, and...
It's loose.
My understanding typically, if it was a passphrase, and we're talking about something that's kind of long, with special characters in it, then 180 days would be fine, but I'm used to seeing mostly 90 to do that, so maybe we want to consider doing 90?
Well, that's a whole other discussion. You're right. It's a little loose, but it was purposely set that way, a little, little more loose.
Why was it set more loose?
Well, to be quite honest, and if you, if you ask your users, I mean, there's a massive amount of passwords that people have to deal with. And so, a lot of what we do, we integrate this computer login with a lot of the other systems, so it, it was mainly more to relieve the stress on the user.
Okay, well, that's a round thing. If everybody else is okay with it, I'm fine.
But to be honest, you know, quite honestly, as was pointed out, the length of the password is probably has more importance than, say, the timing of when you change that, as we just pointed out, you know, we usually pass phrases, complex passwords really don't really do anything for you. It's phrases do. So if you're, you know, if we're going to move anything, I think it would be more advantageous to look at a...
Really, I just do phrases now, instead of words, but, okay.
But there again, that's just a matter of our preference, you know, if... But there again, that's just a matter of, of our preference, you know, if council feels like that, that is something that, you know, we want to see changed, we can certainly, certainly do that.
I mean, I'm okay, like, you're, so on one forty-three, so I finally found, so on one forty-three, the general statements, I think are good, user level passwords have to be changed, user accounts, and then there's, the in-code password must be unique from all other accounts, that statement in there, and then at the end of that says mandatory Windows lock screen will be enforced. That's, that's not a user behavior.
No.
That's a, and maybe, maybe we do this in the user manual, where we, we notify users, you know, of what we're going to be doing as well, but, so that's what it says, fifteen minutes, and then at the bottom of one forty-four, it says Windows lock screens, account lockouts will be for ten minutes.
So Chris, so Chris, except we in-code everything a single sign on?
Not everything, but I do try to make, as much as I can integrate, it just makes it easier on everyone else. We do what they call active directory integration.
Do we have a motion somewhere in here?
I hope this is discussion.
No, I mean, it's, it's an action item, so I'm just curious if someone wants to make a motion, we can make a motion with a certain caveat, but I'm just wondering, do we want to make a motion? So that we know which of these conversations can be, you know, massaged, or offline, or emails, or, and what, what actually, when it comes to this particular policy, do we want to approve?
You want to just call it discussion, because I've got a couple of things that may be...
I want to make a motion to table, because we're going to, I think we're going to discuss.
All right, that's fine, I'll second the table, so, all right.
Okay, so we have a motion to table, we have a second.
And that's really just for discussion, not really...
Yeah.
So we can do something.
Apparently, we're going to have more discussion about passwords.
Not from me.
Chris and I can work together to simplify this, in more appropriate language, I know we, we probably have a little heightened sensitivity, because we did have an attempted attack on our system a couple of weeks ago, and if it wasn't for Chris's vigilance and the awareness of one of our staff members, you know, it could have been a very bad thing.
So maybe, since we have a motion to table, you two guys could both email Chris and Kathy your thoughts, they can come back to us.
That was the only, that was the only point that I had, Chris, so.
Ron, though, he got his across. I, he probably would want you to put it in writing, just so he knows if they're going to go back and revise it.
So, I mean, just to be clear, what you are saying is, you think that just a generalization in the manual, and then the more specific minutia details, we...
Well, there's some things, you know, like you comments about, like you said, good computing practices, which include X, Y, and Z, and then you can list domain regulations or whatever will be enforced at a domain level. Okay, I, I think you can bring this down.
Sure.
Because partly, I want you to be able to maneuver
Absolutely.
and respond without being in violation of a policy manual, without having to go through policy changes, just to, just to tweak some use.
I'd like to ask staff, y'all sat down and you went through this, so, what's your opinions on location of, you know, the, the security and the, what we've just been talking about? You're okay with it being in the, in the manual, or, or what? What makes it easier to communicate with your staff?
I'm trying to, can you repeat the question, I guess?
Well, especially the IT policy, that's, that's a good two pages, three pages maybe, of the policy manual, what's your opinion of that specifically? Is that the right place for it, or is there another location you think?
I know that, I appreciate the trainings and the updates and warnings that Chris puts out, you know, through the, through Outlook, through email, and he'll either send that to all staff, typically to all staff, I know that's very useful for my staff, because, like you said, they're getting that constant reminder, hey, if you don't know who it's from, don't open it, and even if you do know who it's from, double check and make sure it really is that person, or, and they haven't been compromised, so that's what I find most useful, is that, that communication that's, that's already ongoing.
So, use of personal electronic devices and city business with that personal devices, is that covered?
Probably not, probably not adequately.
And that's, that is, I couldn't find it, at least in those language, and so that was, that was the one sort of omission that I thought we ought to, we ought to consider, whether or not we need to address it at this, at this stage, but I think it's something we ought to consider, is if, if I don't like the city's laptop, so I'll bring in my own laptop, and I'm hooking up to the city network, and, you know, what, what interface is that, and what restrictions and rules, and, because I know some places you plug in, and basically, you're still blocked off until you agree to let the domain, all the domain rules apply to your personal equipment, and that's just something, I think it's you and Kathy probably ought to chat about, that's the one, the one thing that I sort of saw, this big hole in terms of how, how personal equipment's integrated with, with our system, if it's allowed at all, if it is allowed, what are the, what are the thoughts and restrictions on it?
Well, to add to that, Mike, I think, I think the, there's things we need to add to it, I think the idea was to bring in policies that, the ones that are there now had not, had not been addressed, and they just, we, we had done those incrementally, there were some, there were a few immediate things.
Olivia, it could, could be something that we, we clean up this one thing, and then y'all work for the next, but I think that's, that's one thing that probably ought to be addressed.
All right.
So, go ahead, go ahead. We have a motion to table, a second?
I had, I had a couple more things I wanted to just hit real quick, so. Well, Charlie, you can go ahead.
Well, mine is just one, and it's basically for Bill and for Kathy, on page ninety-two, six oh three, holidays worked, it says all employees will receive an additional eight hours pay for the specified city holiday, I don't think it's worded right at all.
I'm sorry, what page ninety?
Ninety-two.
Two.
This is, so all employees, employees get? It just, six oh three. It's page ninety-two on the
In the manual.
On the packet, okay. If you want to, if you're on the...
Page, I've got it on page ninety-one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on ninety-one.
Ninety-one, ninety-two. Okay, I just think that should be worked on. And if, if I'm a police officer, and, and I'm, we've got two scenarios.
Twelve hour day, yeah.
Well, I don't, we can, we can change that, but you see the heading, holidays worked.
Well, I understand that, but then you turn around and say that all employees, that worked.
We'll, we'll say all employees who worked.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then it doesn't, it doesn't address, my point is, is if you're a police officer, and depending on where you are with overtime and such, we don't address that, or even if you're a public works employee, or an hourly employee, you get called up. What if, what if they're, depending on when the holiday falls within the pay period, wouldn't you consider that if, if, if they're on time and a half? It says it.
I can write it whichever way, I don't know what the...
No, I'm asking, I'm, I just don't like the, I just don't like the language, and I could be wrong this time.
You're saying if all employees who work, if you work a holiday, we're going to give you another eight hours of dollars.
No, that's fine, that's straight, that's straight pay that they...
You have your normal straight time, and then you have holiday pay.
That eight hours does not, does not fall into overtime calculations, I understand that, but what if the employee is already at an overtime situation when he's called into work on a holiday?
Then he would receive overtime, if he's already, if he's already gotten, he or she has gotten a...
That's accruing overtime, that's all that talks about, is they can accrue it.
Okay, are you, I'm sorry, are you speaking to the second paragraph, is that what you're...
That's all about accruing.
Okay, this... This, this may not be clear at first glance, but what that allows people to do is if they don't want to take that eight hours of holiday pay as pay, they can bank it and use it as PTO.
I understand.
And we're, we're trying this initially by allowing them to bank up to sixteen hours, so two, two, two days essentially, so that then they have a couple of extra days of PTO, and they'll have a, a particular period of time where they have to use it.
Sixty days to take and use it, correct.
And we're, we're going to see how this works, and if, if we want to come back and suggest a longer period of time, or more hours, we'll bring that back.
That's why I said you were a little...
Yeah, does that make, does that help? Okay.
I just don't think we're addressing, I think we're going to have controversy if...
I think your question was, what if someone has already worked forty hours, and there's a holiday, then on the holiday, do they get time and a half times two, correct?
The, the holiday pay is straight time, I understand that. So would they, would they receive double time, or double time and a half, I guess, I guess is the two scenarios.
They would not get double time and a half, they would get their normal shift, because they're on duty for the holiday, and then they would get eight hours of holiday pay on top of that.
But if their normal shift was overtime?
If they've already met the, the hours for overtime, then they would get, the overtime is calculated based on the entire pay cycle, so it's eighty hours, anything over eighty hours that's not including holiday is paid at overtime, does that make sense?
Oh, it makes sense to me, I tried to make it make sense to you, to the associates.
Maybe we need a little clarification.
That's all I've got. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, on page sixty, the agenda packets, page fifty-two of the manual, there is a sentence that mentions car allowance, I think we can remove that entire sentence, it's the sentence right above the one that's highlighted in blue.
Page fifty-two of the manual?
Yeah, fifty-two of the manual, page sixty of the pack.
Okay. There must have been a stray that we didn't pick. Yeah, we, I picked it up after you pointed it out to me.
Section five, the educational loan assistance, this is just for recruiting purposes and new employees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it would not apply to existing employees?
Well, I'm sorry, you're, it, it applies to existing and new employees, but the idea is that younger employees nowadays typically have college education, but they also are more likely to have debt, so they're not going to really need the tuition reimbursement program, but the educational loan assistance might appeal to them more.
I, I just bring it up so that everybody has awareness of it.
Right.
My favorite was the old section five, where we totally eliminated all the car allowances.
That is now removed.
That's been a goal of mine for a long time, and so we've totally, totally removed them now, and I would just encourage other cities and school districts, whoever, to also do away with those car allowances. And then on page one thirty-one, which is one twenty-three of the manual, there, there's a little cleanup that can be in there, I wanted to get rid of the, for those, because it says for those employees, you'd get rid of the for those. And that is the last of my nitpicking in the manual.
Any more discussion?
Oh, I thought I had something else for passwords, no, just kidding. I used my fingerprint, I can't remember any of mine.
So if I understand, we're tabling this for tonight, and we're bringing it back with the revisions.
Well, that's the motion on the floor, we haven't voted on it yet. So, with that, we have a motion to table, we have a second, any more discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, yes ma'am, motion carried.
Thank you.
Passes four oh. Motion to table, passes four oh. Okay, let's move on to item eleven, which is presentation of a final report regarding a variance to the minimum lot frontage, the proposed variance is for the metro development on two point two acres of land, as stated in your agenda packet.
Counsel, this is a request for a variance for a property located in the commercial corridor zone, the site was formerly known as the Living Earth Business, the property within the commercial corridor zone is required to have a two hundred foot frontage, this property only has a hundred fifty-nine point seven four feet, the property was annexed into the city in two thousand and fifteen, and a zoning application was reviewed and approved in two thousand and eighteen, the planning and zoning commission has reviewed this during their meeting earlier this month, and have recommended approval of the variance.
Okay, we will move on to item twelve, which is a public hearing regarding a variance to minimum lot frontage, proposed variances for the metro development on the two point two acres of land, as stated in your agenda packet. We will open the public hearing at seven forty-five. Would anybody like to speak during the public hearing?
Can I ask a question during the public hearing?
You can.
Is there going to be any access from that parcel to the Sam Moon parking lot?
There will not be.
What's the plan for that?
It's a three-story office building with surface parking.
I was thinking maybe in the longer term, it'd be nice if they could divert something out towards David Memorial, but...
Comes to a peak up there, this area, they could get to it.
But, so this, this is going to be part of the Metro Park development, this is...
No.
This is not.
Okay, so this is a separate landowner?
Correct.
I'm just trying to avoid a future traffic problem, everybody's going to go in and out out of the feeder.
On the feeder.
If there was another way for them to, to leave.
That's the way it was with Living Earth, so.
Yeah, they didn't, but they didn't have a three-story office building.
Three-story office building with a worth of traffic.
I'd go in and get my mulch and go.
Up the feeder.
Okay, let's, we have this discussion in the next agenda item, so let's, if no one wants to speak, let's close the public hearing, seven forty-seven. And then we'll move into item thirteen, which is discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance in City Shandau, Texas, submitting the code of ordinances to approve a variance to the lot frontage for the two point two acres, as previously discussed and stated in your agenda packet.
We'll move to adopt the ordinance.
So we have a motion by Councilman Brought to adopt the ordinance, do we have a second? We have a second by Councilman Gristy, do we have any discussion? I'd like to know a little bit more about what's going on here.
Okay, the development is proposed to be a three-story office building, located at the western, or the, the front portion of the property, with surface parking to the south.
Can we get that map back up there, please, Chris? I'm sorry, Jackie.
You're fine.
So to the western, the southwest portion...
The northwestern portion of the property.
The northwest portion of the property is going to be a three-story office building.
Yes, sir. There's an existing entrance that is from, that property currently has two drive entrances off of the feeder road, they'll be closing that north entrance, and they'll just be using a southern entrance into the property.
It's small.
And then, surface parking along the southern portion of the property, and, and then, and towards the eastern portion into that point.
Jackie, are there going to be any requirements for the bottom floor as far as, pardon me, retail, or anything like that?
No, it's a commercial corridor zone, so it would be, I mean, they may have some sort of retail component, but it, it will more than likely be office space.
Right, okay.
So the frontage currently of the property is a hundred fifty-nine point seven four feet?
Correct.
What variance are they asking for, how much, how much of that, because the frontage is supposed to be two hundred feet?
Correct. Right.
What are, so what are they asking for? I, I don't know...
Do we know the building yet?
Yes.
How big is the building?
I don't have those, those numbers. I can, I can go find that out for you if you'd like.
I just think before we start granting variances, we need to have all the facts in place. Because listen, I'm not the one voting on this, you guys are, but I think we ought to have all the facts in place before we start granting variances.
The, the building itself and the, and the site work have already been, have been submitted to the city and reviewed. We've looked at it, it fits on the site. The building square footage, they meet the requirements for all setbacks, all parking calculations, can be requirements are currently being met on the site.
I understand. I think my point is we've had some developers in the past, and not even all that distant past, which have asked for variances, we give them, and then they come back with, yeah, something that.
Projects change.
Projects change, or, and then it's no longer appealable to the city, but we've granted a variance that we wouldn't have otherwise granted had the project been presented in its entirety, and we saw that it really wasn't something that fit what we wanted to do in the city.
Right, I understand.
Is this something we could wrap into, as much as I hate PDVs, could we wrap that into a PDV where the variance is contingent upon the project?
No, I don't think so. The only thing, why couldn't you?
Well, I mean, that would be.
Because it meets everything, all our ordinances right now.
But it doesn't.
But it doesn't meet the frontage.
Doesn't meet the frontage.
They're asking for a variance on the frontage.
So whatever, they could put a circus in there, the next guy, it's still going to have the 159.
That's, that's the point.
What do you mean, that's the point?
Then we still have the opportunity to not have a circus there if we don't want one.
You're licking down the road.
Well, of course, that's our job.
Well, the agenda item is to.
Whether or not we grant the variance.
Grant the variance.
So we can grant them a blanket variance, which would apply to that land.
Period.
Period, and anything that's currently slated for commercial, they could put there.
Correct, as long as it can comply with the zoning requirement.
As long as it applies with our commercial stuff, they'd have to come back if they needed, if they wanted an exception to that.
Right.
But we have an opportunity now to say, come to us with your full plan, and we'll apply, we'll grant your variance based on this package, and if you change that package, that variance stops until you come.
I agree with that. I'm kind of tired of granting variances to people that then absolutely things change, you know?
I apologize, I didn't bring my surface today. I'd be more than happy, I can go grab that site plan and throw it so we have it available to discuss. Can you just give me a few seconds?
Yeah, we could, we could table this item and move on to another item and come back, circle back to it.
You'll have to table, skip to the, not the next item either.
Just suspend it, right?
Yeah, or not even table it, just suspend it, yeah.
Jackie's on the network?
No, I have to put it there real quick.
Okay, let's do that. Do we need a vote to suspend it?
Okay, we'll suspend item 13, and we will move to.
17?
17, yeah. We will move down to item 17, which is discussion and possible action regarding the investment policy.
Mayor and counsel, this is a yearly reoccurring policy that we need to approve per the public improvement, I mean, Public Funds Investment Act. We have not changed the three approved investments in at least 10 years. The only changes to this policy that's presented to you tonight is some minor composition and terminology changes, which are noted in the attached policy. So if there's any questions, please let me know.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to approve. I have a second by Councilman McLeod, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 18, discussion and possible action to declare surplus vehicles and equipment.
Mayor and counsel, this is also a yearly agenda item that we do in the situation of we have any excess vehicles or equipment that we are planning to sell, we need to officially declare, I mean, declare it as a surplus. As you will see, there are three non-patrol cars that are listed, those are all the Toyota Priuses, and then there are two police Tahos that we will be selling this year, as well as some police equipment. We did a mass radio replacement about two years ago, so this is just the ones that we've had from that replacement, and then there's some tasers.
Do I have a motion?
Some will.
I have a motion by Councilman Brought to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Gristy. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, so when it mentions, say, unit 13-3, that means it was a 2013?
Not technically, it's, it's when we bought the vehicle. So we bought it in 2013.
Okay, just close.
Yeah, we based it on a calendar year, not a fiscal year.
And then, I guess in the future, I'd like to see the mileage on the vehicles anyway.
Okay.
And then these are all, all the Priuses, or that's just stuff that was?
So per the equipment replacement schedule, they are up. We have the money funded to replace them. They are just not feasible for what those job descriptions are.
Yeah, we've known that since they were bought.
Building inspector, wastewater treatment, and public works, typically you want trucks for those positions, so.
You've got a lot of undercarriage damage.
Shocking.
So I know Jackie and Joseph are going to be working together.
So that's the plan, though, Joseph, is to replace those with appropriate vehicles.
Half-ton trucks.
Okay. And then the tasers, the, just a curiosity question, they're aged out. Is there a market for old tasers? Is that not something we just dispose of, or?
They give us a.
Trade-in.
Trade-in for.
Okay.
So I guess they rebuild them.
That's what I was, like, it's not, this is not stuff we're throwing on eBay.
No.
Yeah, okay.
We've sold them to other agencies before, so if we can do that, we will. Most of these are.
I knew we had a bunch of really old ones.
Yeah, we're just going to have to send back to them because we can't do anything else with them.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 19, discussion and possible action regarding changes to the purchasing policy.
Mayor and counsel, this was, this policy change was discussed with our auditors, also with several other staff members. Basically, the two proposed changes are to automatically approve any purchase over 15,000 that's specifically detailed in the budget. So this is more of like, some capital projects that fall below that bid-in requirement. For instance, I think I use, for example, Raymond's restroom remodel, it's an exact quote for $18,360. You just approved it when we, I mean, when we approved the budget. So it's kind of redundant for us to have it, to bring it back because it's over her purchased-in limit, even though it's specifically detailed. So that, that was just the one change, and then the second change is that we are going to switch up how we reconcile our credit card bills. Currently, the policy requires anything over $100, we have to put a requisition to turn into a purchase order before we actually purchase the item. The problem is, is that on credit cards, there can be hundreds of charges, so when you have hundreds of POs and we have to receive in each PO, it becomes pretty daunting, as well as the audit work on it. So I've talked to other, I've looked at other cities, I've talked to our auditors, they said that it, as long as the individual purchase is under 3,000, it won't be a problem to just do a one purchase order at the end of the month when you reconcile the bill. So these are just the two changes, and I would love to hear your feedback, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to approve, we have a second by Councilman Brought, do we have any discussion?
So I'm going to start with the credit card one. Are we going to, when we get a PO, I mean, I'm already looking at, we see all the little line items, are we going to get everything broken out individually, like, all the purchases that were made?
So how it works is like admin, they're, you know, when Ashley, whoever, or Lacy receives that credit card bill, they would put in one purchase order that itemizes each and associates with the general ledger account.
Okay.
So it'll break out still how it is on the check register and how it is on the check system.
So we'll still see a check, because like, the check register shows, so we'll still see every purchase broken out?
Because we run, when we run our check register, that's on the last agenda of the month, we do it by the item, not the payable, so yes, it'll show up.
Okay. And then is this going to be only for some of the city credit cards?
Yes.
That are issued to specific individuals?
So currently, we have certain staff that have city credit cards in their name. We also have some travel cards, and we have some, like, we have, Civic Club has cards, and we have an NCAA event card, but typically each department, like Civic Club would file under admin, so Ashley would reconcile those. We typically do any of the travel cards that are not specific, so it would be for every credit card still. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I like the efficiency there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not particularly in favor, my personal opinion on number one, I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal to put it on the agenda. If there are very specific items that, you know, maybe we put a percentage on, I don't think it's a big deal to come back and go, hey, we're ready to go 15,000, I mean, we meet twice a month. It takes 10 seconds, and it gives you transparency, and it, it's a way that we know, I mean, $60,000 is, if it's an ongoing expense, like, this is a membership that we're going to pay $10,000 a month, are we thinking each one of those checks needs to be approved, or we, like, for one expense, like, you know, we wanted to do a $30,000 road project, that doesn't need to be bid, so is the thought, we approved it in the budget, and then it's never seen again? Was that the thought behind it?
So, so typically, it's per the original purchase order, it's not per check, so, you know, in a project like that, we were bringing back the, just that $30,000, and then that gives her the authority to approve that purchase order. We don't bring back every check if it goes over 15,000, it's just the original purchase order. The thought is, is that since you've already discussed it during council, and if it was based on an exact quote or something like that, you've already approved it technically. So instead of cluttering the agenda with these items that we've already approved, we can do another way of just a non-action item saying, hey, this project started, this PO was approved, we can put the purchase order number, the approval date, I can do that. It just prevents staff having to create agenda reports for everything over 15,000 that was already approved that's going to start. There is the caveat in there that if it goes over the approved amount, the scope at all changes. Sorry, I had them all memorized, now I forget. And there's two other ones.
And it would come back to council at that.
Yeah, it would come back to council before we even issue a PO at that point. Oh, also, if it's event-specific, because we do have these, NCAA is probably the only event we really do that's going to be over 15, but like, with the stadium, we're going to have to bring that back before we pay it, just to make sure everything's, you know, because it's not a for-sure budget item. Because we just approve a event total, but anything that goes over that 15, I want to bring back to you guys so that you approve it before we pay it.
You said you were going to go ahead, and when these came up, you were going to mention them at a council meeting anyway.
That's correct, and that's why we added this, the bullet point at the bottom of number one, that we would add a non-action item notation on the agenda, where we list the projects that we've kicked off that are approved in the budget without any changes. So that would be not only advising you, but it would be advising the public. And, but the idea is that if, if something's already approved in the budget and that amount stays the same, that we save a little time moving things forward. And if, like we said, if there's a change, scope, increase in price, it comes to council.
So the specific program, though, the CVB, Expedia, Travel Click, that's one that, to me, is a little nebulous, and I'm not picking on this one, John, so, because I like, I like this program, I'm just saying, that's different to me than a quoted bid from a contractor that says, I will accomplish this task for this money.
Well, this is actually very similar, because we, we use that same amount of money for that particular thing.
But we're going to issue multiple checks throughout the year for this project, right? Or is it one?
We do one purchase order, and then we in charge against it. But the same with capital projects.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
I'm good with it. Sounds like it's going to save staff time.
It's kind of pros and cons, like, I get where you're coming from at the same time.
I've lived through some, some past, has a past history that leaves me a little leery of this, and I'm glad there's a lot more checks in here. I like the non-action items, maybe, maybe that's a, instead of a can be, maybe we change that to a must be, that any item that's over that, that's already been approved, must be addressed in the next budget, in the next budget.
Council meeting.
Council meeting, must be listed in.
Could be part of, part of what Kathy would do in her monthly report.
No, I want a separate line, I want a.
We would show it in a agenda board.
Number 16, this project has begun.
It would just basically be a presentation item.
Yeah, a presentation item. So, yeah, I guess if you'll, we'll change that, and if we can change that to must be listed as a separate non-action item.
Well, as of right now, we have a motion to approve with a second, so.
So you approve with the.
What's that?
So, there's one more.
We had, who made the motion?
I think Ron, Ron made the, Ron the motion.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to change the last bullet of number one to say must be added to the agenda item.
Got it. Lacey, did you have something else?
The other minor change was that we just had to change Bill's firm's name, that's why it's highlighted.
Okay.
It was still CKR Law, so, just in case you were wondering why that was highlighted.
So we have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to approve with the one change that the last bullet point needs to be reworded as must be added to the agenda. Do we have a second by Councilman Brought?
Yes, you do.
We have our second by Councilman Brought, do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Jackie, are we ready to circle back? Are you ready, Mayor?
Sure. Circle back, and we will open back up item 13.
Chris, there's a landscape plan under the Agenda Pack folder on the P drive for this meeting. On the, under the, on the P drive, under the City Council Agenda Packs for this meeting, there's a landscape plan to pull up to view. What he's got is a page pulled out of the Civil Plan Set that was submitted to the city for review, specifically the landscape plan, that'll show you the building layout. The building is a proposed three-story, 36,000-square-foot building, and then the surface parking to the south and then to the east on that lot.
Do we know what the building material is?
The building plans have already been reviewed and approved prior to the Civil. Those were approved back in July, I looked at that, I believe, so they would have, they would meet our masonry material at that time.
They would be, oh, okay.
So this wouldn't be subject to 2439 changes?
The plans that were reviewed and approved at that time were approved in July, so with the, those elevations for each of those buildings would have complied with the IDC.
At that time?
Yep.
Yeah, that's another good.
Is that accurate, Bill?
Well.
Now, the 2439 is in place, is what we did in July.
I guess they could, I guess they could come back and.
Make application.
They could withdraw their building permit and, or ask for a change in the building permit.
So which, back to Mike's point of, kind of makes sense as to why maybe in this particular case, we do something along the lines, as much as I'm same as Mike, I hate, I hate PDVs.
I hate them.
But this does give us the opportunity to, to say, okay, we'll give you the variance as long as everything stays the way you're saying it.
As long as, this is, this is what we're getting.
Yeah, I like that.
So how do, then we're off topic, how does this compare to the final plan of the property?
I don't think it's off topic, because it's, it's not off topic, because it is, it is dependent.
case, we do something along the lines. Much as I'm same as Mike, I hate, I hate PDDs.
I hate them.
But this does give us the opportunity to, to say, okay, we'll give you the variance as long as everything stays the way you're saying it.
As long as this is, this is what we get.
This is what we're getting.
Yeah, I like that.
So how do, we're off topic. How does this compare to the final plan of the property?
I don't think it's off topic, because it's, it's, it's not off topic, because it is, it is dependent upon whether or not we grant a variance.
If we don't grant a variance, they can't build anything.
So we got an empty lot with nothing. You don't grant the variance, we keep an empty lot with nothing. Otherwise, the city gets the improvement on the property and-
Well, maybe an improvement or maybe another, I mean, who knows what?
Could be an eyesore. Could be something that we don't necessarily want.
But if this is real, if this is legitimately what they want, it won't be a big deal for them to go back and, I mean, be, be a fairly short PDD. They're already in compliance. There's not a bunch of other stuff they're asking for.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be kind of drastic here and overly dramatic, but we grant a variance that says, okay, you don't have to meet the, the frontage requirement. And they come back, they say, you know what, we're not gonna build this thirty-six thousand square foot, three-story building anymore. Now we're gonna build a one-story, metal tin roof building that we're gonna sell, you know, widgets out of. And that, and that's what we're stuck with, because we gave them the variance.
No, no, because we have ordinance that says you can't put a middle, metal building with widgets. You know what I mean?
Well, actually, according-
Twenty-four, thirty-nine says, as long as it's a legal covering.
That's right. According to state law, that, that's no longer applicable. So I, I understand what you're saying. But this gives us the opportunity to say, we want what you're telling us we're gonna get. If we're giving something, they should give something back. And I, I mean, Bill-
They have a, they have a piece of property with a hundred and fifty, fifty-nine foot of frontage. Our ordinance says it has to be two hundred. They're asking for a variance that they can proceed to purchase this property and build a building with that variance. It's got nothing to do with, with all, everything that staff does to make sure that the square peg fits in this square hole.
Jackie, did you have the elevations?
Am I missing something or?
There's a, there's a rendering in their building plans that we can put up. I mean, both these on here as well.
But Bill, this wouldn't be, I mean, do you think we could pull something together in a couple of weeks?
Yes. Yeah, it's, that's easy to do. But if the question is, can someone sneak around what they presented to the city because of the new house bill and come in and say, now I want my three-story building to be vinyl siding. If you pass the variance tonight, they could do that. They'd have to start over with a building permit. I mean, there would be delays in expenses, but could that be done? Yes, that could be done.
But it wouldn't take long. It's not like we were gonna be holding up the whole development if we come back in a couple of weeks.
Everyone that comes from the floor is gonna hold it up at the same time.
A PDD would be a rezoning application. So you'd be looking at two hearings at planning and zoning and one at the county.
He's gonna, yeah, he, they're-
We'd have to go back to PNC, right?
It's got to go back to PNC and with additional fees and notices.
If we're gonna amend an ordinance, is there some way we could wrap it into amending the ordinance?
We do not have the authority, because it's not on the agenda, to put in requirements tonight.
Well, let's get it right.
There's a, on that P drive as well, there's an address file that says seventeen-eight-three-five-I-forty-five-second-review. If you'll open that up, they've got a rendering on page seven of the document.
That's a rendering or is that spec? They specified the materials?
I'm looking for the elevation pages.
I think number seven covers. Any changes in the approved plan, scope or work required revisions submitted for review and approved?
It's a pretty looking building, but I, I think as far as I'm concerned tonight, my personal position is to deny the variance at this time, but the suggestion that we bring it back as a PDD to say, agreed, build, just bring it back as an agreement.
You might, you might, you might want to table it. I have a thought, I have a thought, but I, I need to do some research.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to table. We have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any further discussion?
This is what happens when the state legislature overreaches and hamstrings us.
A motion to approve just comes away or what?
Oh, yeah, there was that.
Was there a motion to approve?
Yeah. I made the motion and deemed it a second.
Okay, so we had a motion to approve with a second, so we need to vote. So, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor to deny?
No.
No.
Tie vote. I'll give it a no, break the tie. Do we have a second motion on the floor?
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table by Councilman Raymaker. We have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to table carries four oh. Thank you for correcting me on that, Mayor Protop. See, you're better taking notes than me.
What?
Okay, um, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna wrap, I'm gonna, item fourteen, fifteen and sixteen are of the same plat.
Well, one that-
Well, one's a public hearing, yeah.
No, you can't do that. But you tabled this, so you got to-
Table, if we tabled that, there's no way we can go, we can go through fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, right, Bill?
That's correct, because the plat includes the variance.
Includes the variance. Yeah, so, um, yeah, those are, and those items are tabled as well. Okay, then we skip all the way back down to item twenty, which is discussion of possible action to approve the impact fee study as provided in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget.
Mayor, just a quick question before we go into this and the next three items. These are the, the three, three of the capital projects that were discussed and approved at the budget workshop, or discussed at the workshop and approved two weeks ago at the council meeting. Would you, do you want me to give a quick background before we go into it or wait for council to make a motion and then answer any questions? It's your agenda, so I'd-
We can do a quick background just for the audience. I don't, I don't have any problem with transparency.
Okay, great. So this project is to approve a proposal for blial engineering, to, to work with staff to complete an, an impact fee study. The total cost of the proposal is twenty-five thousand dollars. This is going to be shared between the city and NDD at the thirty-seventy split. Basically, the, the impact fee is going to be focused on those costs associated with the impact of new development or redevelopment and to, to attempt to make a, a fair placement of those costs on the new developers rather than the existing and current users.
With related to water and-
Water and-
Waste water, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to approve. I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion?
Has this crossed NDD? Have they approved this or is this?
Yeah, so that was discussed in the NDD budget.
It's approved in the budget. They did not approve the actual expenditure in seventeen-five. As of right now, they would have to approve it still. It'd still come before NDD, right?
It was in the budget that NDD adopted.
Right.
What's that? NDD adopted it, right.
Right, so we'll, we'll request NDD. It, it comes before city council, because it's a city project.
Right.
It will come before NDD for funding their portion.
But yes, it was approved in the budget. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Before we move into item twenty-one, thank you, Jackie. I didn't mean to make you jump through hoops like that, but I felt like that was some pertinent information, so I appreciate you doing that. Item twenty-one, discussion of possible action to approve the elevated storage tank design as provided in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad to approve.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Item twenty-two, discussion of possible action to approve the water sewer rate study as provided in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget. Do we have a motion? I have a motion to approve by Councilman Gristi.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Broad. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Item twenty-three, discussion of possible action to approve the sewer collection system model as provided in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Okay.
I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And lastly, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen regular meeting.
I move they both be approved as red.
A motion by Councilman Broad to approve as red. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. I miscounted. We have one more. Discussion of possible action to ratify the accounts payable for August twenty-nineteen.
I moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad. I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve carries four oh. All right, that gets us to our second citizens forum, item twenty-six. I didn't have anybody sign up to speak. Going once? Twice? No? Okay. All right, well then we will move into item twenty-seven, which is the city administrator updates.
Council, I've just got a few quick ones here. The county has installed the traffic signals at Medical Plaza and Pinecroft. They're flashing red right now, but they're gonna start the signals on regular cycles next week. They're also installing a pedestrian crosswalk, so you'll see some activity associated with that. We've got a Coffee with Cobs coming up on the fourth, and that is sponsored by the Shenandoah Starbucks. Chief, refresh my memory on the time. Was that four o'clock?
Yes.
Four o'clock. Four to five-thirty, so I hope, hope y'all can make that. Police Department also has some community awareness AOR training on, that's tomorrow night, Thursday, September twenty-sixth. And the theme is Home Alone After School, so it's oriented toward kids, includes some things like gun safety, other safety things that are focused on kids.
Another question on that. Is that oriented for the kids or for the parents of the kids?
It's actually for both.
Okay.
So the parents can bring their kids and they'll both learn something.
That's what I was asking, okay.
And then finally, National Night Out is Monday, October seventh, six to eight. So everything's moving forward as planned. It's gonna be at the park, and that is the same week of TML. So we've got a lot going on that week. Hope y'all can make that as well. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We will move into council inquiry and we will start with Councilman McLeod.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I wanted to say thank you to our current council and thank you to our current staff. If people ask why we spend money on drainage, thank you to past councils and, and past staff who set us up to be in this position. If you ask us why we spend money on drainage, why drainage studies and our streets and things, why that's so much of our budget, just ask Melba and, and Harvey. We, I know we had some residents who had some local issues, but as a city, we've been untouched by those, by those two storms that absolutely wreaked havoc with other places. And when people ask why we're looking at spending so much money on a east side detention pond or in maintaining our detention, this is why. It's, it's for us, it's for our people. And so I just wanna say thank y'all, thank the staff for taking care of that.
I echo those comments.
I do too.
Me too, yes.
Councilman Broad?
I'm good, sir. I have nothing.
Okay. Councilman Gristi?
No, sir, I have nothing this week.
Two quick ones. Kathy, the agenda cutoff then for the, the first meeting in October after TML.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a timeframe that you wanna not take any requests because people will not be available?
That would be tomorrow. That's the cutoff for items to add, and then we will be putting together documentation over the next few days after that.
This one, I thought it was interesting. I was driving Sebastian back home and I saw in, I think it was Oak Ridge, they had a motorcycle patrol. And I thought, wouldn't that be cool if we had at least one motorcycle unit that would kinda do the function of bike patrol, but without having to do all the pedaling? I mean, you don't need a big, you don't need a big Harley like in Chippes, you know, but, but it would be, it would get you around a lot faster in the neighborhoods and still give you that stealth that you love.
Do you want me to price it for you?
Sure.
I think the last time we looked at it, the worker's comp was twice, twice as much.
Liability would be high.
Let's just find out, sure.
I will. I can price it for you.
It's more work for me too, Ron.
It's called job security. That's it.
Anything else? Okay. The only thing I have is, has, three of us here sitting up on this dais were former PNC members and we actually-
It was fun, but-
And we actually all served together. We actually all served together. It was fun. And so listen, I, I never take lightly when we get a recommendation from PNC. I, you know, I know what that feels like to sit in that room and then feel like you wasted your time when council comes up here and decides something differently. I don't, we're not deciding something different in this particular case, I don't feel. I think that we're trying to make sure that the decision that was made is what gets stuck to. So I appreciate PNC very much, and please don't feel like we were slighting you in any way, shape or form. I also wanna say thank you to our police department. I got to take part today in a meet you, at a see you at the pole event at Craig Community School that the police department took part in. And it was really neat to see how well-received our police department was. It's clear that that was not their first visit to that school. They go up there on a regular basis. They know them very well. And it just brings back home and reinforces the fact that our police department is involved in our community. And that's what we love about this city. That's why we all love living here. That's why we try to keep this small-town community feel. And so I appreciate our, our, our police department's efforts in those types of respects. So thank you very much for that. Other than that, thank you everybody for coming and have a great rest of your week and be safe out there. We will adjourn the meeting at eight-twenty-nine. Thanks, everybody.